Commissioners ready? Good evening, everyone. I'm going to call to order this meeting of the City of Capitola Planning Commission for April 5, 2018. We will begin with a roll call.
Commissioner Newman?
Here.
Commissioner Smith?
Here.
Commissioner Welch?
Here.
Commissioner Westman?
Here.
Chairperson Story?
Here. Please join me in the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Before we go any further, I do want to announce that this meeting tonight is cable cast on Charter of Communication channel, cable channel eight and ATT U verse channel 99. It'll be recorded and it will be replayed next Monday and Friday at 1:00 PM on Charter Channel 71 and on Comcast Channel 25. And it is also being streamed at the city's website, which is www.cityofcapitola.org. And I do want to announce that tonight our technician is Victor Herman. With that, we'll go to new business. Do we have any new business this evening? Hearing none, we'll have oral communications, which are additions and deletions to the agenda. Staff have any additions or deletions?
We have no changes.
No changes. Commissioners? Hearing none, the agenda will stand as it's written. Next, we'll have public comments. This is an opportunity for members of the public to address the planning commission on items that are not on tonight's agenda. Is anyone that would like to address the commission? Seeing none, I'm going to close the public comment portion of the meeting and we'll move on to commission comments. And I guess I would like to start by announcing that our community development director, Rich Renell, is going to be moving on to the city of Coronado. He will be leaving at the end of the month. Rich, it's been a pleasure working with you over these, what, almost five years?
Five years.
Yeah, about five years. Thank you for, you know, really the wonderful work that you've done and the time I've been on the commission. I think that you have really, you know, run a commendable development department and you have taken on a lot of important projects and marshaled them through for the city of Capitola. So, thank you, the best of luck in your future endeavors. And he will be assuming a similar position with the city of Coronado. And even though it'd be sad to say goodbye to Rich, I am also happy to announce that Kate Hurley will be taking over as the community development director. So, we welcome Kate stepping into that position and we're grateful that you're here to take on that role. Commissioners, any other comments?
Can we give a standing ovation?
No, I would like to say, I feel like we got more than our money's worth because he came in during our general plan and got a new zoning code and he's done a lot of work since he's been here. So, hate to see him go after all the effort, but appreciate what you've done for the city.
Thank you.
And welcome to Katie and big shoes to fill, but you can do it.
Thank you.
Well, it's nice to have the consistency anyway. Losing both of you would have been tough.
I'm going to save my comments for the party.
All right. Okay, well, with that, that brings us to staff comments.
Well, thank you, Mr. Chairman, and thank you for the kind words to you and each of the commissioners. I did want to take a couple of minutes to express my gratitude to the planning commission for the past five years and each of you individually, you've all been very supportive and kind to me, more so than I usually deserve, and it's been greatly appreciated. I can say without hesitation that I've enjoyed working with this planning commission, this city and this community more than any other job I've had. And for that reason, it's a bittersweet evening for me to leave Capitola behind. I really love the community, but it came down to a situation where I could finally, after 20 years living in California, buy a house with this opportunity. So, that was my motivation and I'm excited about it, but I'm really going to miss Capitola. With that said, I'm very excited also for Katie. I think Katie's going to do a great job to provide the continuity within the department, some of the, keep the institutional knowledge, and I feel like, you know, I'm leaving the department in good shape and for that, I feel good. And so, again, thank you for all the support over the past five years.
Thank you, Rich. Any other staff comments? Hearing none, we'll move on to the next item.
Katie, she flinched.
She's biding her time. She's going to wait till she's filling that seat. So, we'll move on to the approval of the minutes. This is approval of the draft, March 1, 2018, planning commission minutes.
And I need to abstain because I was not there.
Okay, we have one abstention. Is there a motion to approve?
I would move approval as drafted.
It's okay.
There's a motion in a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, with one abstention, the motion passes. Next is, on the agenda is our consent calendar. We have one project on the consent calendar, that is 110 Hollister Avenue. It's a design permit for one-story family, single-family residence. I do have to recuse myself because I live in the geographical conflict zone, so I'm going to step aside for this and...
I need to recuse myself due to proximity also.
Okay, just so everybody understand, that's why, you know, we have to leave the dais on this particular one because we are prohibited from voting on it because it's close to our residence. So, with that, I'll turn it over to the vice chair.
So, we have an application, as Chairperson Story mentioned, for a design permit to demolish an existing one-story, single-family residence and construct a new two-story, single-family residence in the R1 Single Family Zoning District. This is on our consent calendar, so unless there is someone in the audience who would like to pull this item for discussion or a member of the commission, seeing no one...
All in favor?
And I'll second that with one comment, which is really more instructional for staff. When we have these kinds of applications where we're actually tearing down and rebuilding, it'd be really nice if, on the site plan, the old footprint and the new footprint were kind of overlaid so we could see it relative to the other houses, and that's just an instructional comment.
Okay, so we have a motion in a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Motion passes. So, we will wait for our other two commissioners to return. They ran away. They ran away.
Thank you, Susan.
Thanks for coming.
Next, we'll move on to our public hearings this evening. The first item is concerning 1098 38th Avenue.
Mr. Chairman, before you go further, as I mentioned, I will have to recuse myself from this item due to a financial relationship with the applicant.
Okay, thank you, Ed.
Don't go far.
Good evening, commissioners. Before you this evening is a fence permit application in which they're requesting exceptions to the design and the height of the fence permit located at 1098 38th Avenue. This is in the RMM zone, so multi-family residential. The applicant is, proposal is on the slide, and they're requesting an eight-foot fence from the front of the building to the rear property line and a six-foot fence from the front of the property to the front of the building. So, they'd like a solid fence. These are a few pictures of the existing conditions. So, currently at 1098 38th Avenue, previously it was home to the Capitola Manor. It was, it's a skilled, they're proposing to bring in a new skilled nursing facility, which fit under the previous conditional use permit that was there. Their building plans are currently being reviewed by the state for an interior remodel. They're also replacing some windows and updating paint, but they're not doing an addition onto the building. So, therefore, it's under the state jurisdiction and not the city jurisdiction for the review of the building plans. If they were to do an addition, we would have the ability to review the plans at the planning commission level, but at this point, it's a remodel. So, this application is simply for a fence permit exception. So, as you can see, the building is set far back on the lot. There's a large parking area in the front. This is the neighboring property, the Shangri Mobile Home Estates to the south, and you can see the existing fence between the two properties is relatively low. It's about 42 inches and then it extends up to five feet at the, from the front facade of the existing mobile home. And on the north side of the property, there's a fence that, as you go down the train tracks, it changes in height. They've had quite a few problems with people breaking into the property and removing boards, so it's really a hodgepodge at this state. So, here is the code requirement for a fence permit. So, from the front facade forward, a fence height limitation is 42 inches, and then from the front facade to the rear property line, an applicant can have a six-foot fence plus two feet of lattice. We also have sightline requirements whenever you have a right-of-way coming into another right-of-way or at the corner. And due to the rail trail being there and the possible new pedestrian use there or rail, the public works director would like to see the first 30 feet of the rail limited to 30 inches in height, and that would be required under code. And so, here's an image of what's typically allowed for six feet of solid fence plus the two feet of lattice on top. The applicant's proposal, again, is eight feet from the front of the building back, and that is a solid redwood fence, and then from the front of the building forward would be six feet of solid redwood fence. And this is an image of what the solid redwood fence would look like. In reviewing this proposal and getting to know the site, I spent some time out there and staff's recommendation would be to require the 30-inch height for 30 feet along the south property and then allow the applicant to go up to the six feet of solid fence due to the large, the building is so far setback that at that point, you're outside of the front yard actual setback area, but it's reasonable to have privacy between the rail trail and the development and to allow the eight feet of solid fence towards the rear portion of the building. This is a medical facility. I toured the building itself and when you're in that building, each of the rooms are, have large windows that face out to the rail trail, and really what they're looking for is privacy for their medical patients. So, it is unique in the fact that it's in a residential zone, but it is a medical facility. So, there can be unique findings made for that situation. On the south side of the property, staff recommends the 42-inch limit to the front facade, the frontmost point of the mobile home on the neighboring property. That would be consistent with what we would require in our residential zone and then to allow the six feet and then up to the eight feet. The applicant worked with the Mobile Home Park to the north and they are okay with, as staff has proposed, these modified conditions onto the project. So, staff is recommending approval of the design permit as conditioned with the modified requirements.
Are there questions to the staff report from commissioners? Hearing none, I'll open it up to the public to address this item.
Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. My name's Christopher Bylow and I'm here as a principal of Waldenken Doster Architects in Monterey, representing my client, the Central California Alliance for Health, and just wanted to thank staff for their processing this application. The alliance, the owners, in agreement with all the staff recommendations. Mainly I'm here, I just thought it might be a good opportunity to update you all on where the project itself stands, so I thought this might be hopefully a okay time to do that. As Katie mentioned, exactly right, we have building plans into the state. What's been, what the current process is, is that the alliance is the owner of the property. They're currently in negotiations to bring in a tenant who will serve as the operator for the facility. The alliance itself isn't looking to be the operator for the facility, but they are looking to own this building to provide the opportunity for senior care in this community because we're realizing it's very badly needed. Unfortunately, the process itself takes some time, both the state review and the negotiations with the operator all take some time. So, we're working as hard as we can to get the facility reopened, but you know, it will be, it's a marathon, not a sprint for sure. So, that's pretty much where the project stands and I'd certainly be happy to answer any questions that you guys might have.
Questions for Christopher from commissioners?
I think so.
I had a question, Christopher, if I may. What's the reason why the eight-foot fence, you would like not to have the lattice on the top two feet?
Certainly. We've given the number of, as the facility's been vacant, we've seen a number of break-ins over that time, and our concern is the lattice would get pretty quickly vandalized and damaged and a solid wood fence would be more durable. We do have issues with people climbing the fences and so, in my experience, the lattice tends to not give in, to give in pretty quickly when somebody's manhandling.
All right, thank you.
Sure, thank you.
Any other members of the public wish to address the commission on this item? Seeing none, I'll bring it back for further discussion and possible action. Commissioners, anybody like that?
I don't have any real issues with it. I also noticed that from the railroad side, from the bed, it's actually higher than the elevation from the ground of the, so it gives you a little more height to look into the building. So, I think the eight-foot height of the fence would add the privacy. Who knows what they're going to do finally with the railroad, whether it's going to be a trail or what the height will be, but I don't have a problem with staff recommendations.
Suzanne, I think the staff did a really nice job, you know, sort of working this out so we have the appropriate height, the fence is where they should be. So, I'm in favor of approving this with the staff recommendations.
I'll just say ditto and move approval.
Okay, well, somebody want to make a motion?
She did.
I just did.
One second.
Okay, and I heard a second. So, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes unanimously. Yeah, thank you, Christopher, for bringing this and thank you for bringing these additional skilled beds to our community. It's sorely needed. Yes, Ed, come on. The next item on our agenda is concerns 1725 48th Avenue. This is a design permit and a conditional use permit to convert an existing historic barn into an accessory dwelling unit and build a new single-car garage in the R1 Single Family Residential Zoning District. Can we have a staff report, please?
Would you, thank you, Commissioner Story. The existing residence at 1725 48th Avenue is a historic two-story, single-family residence with an existing, non-conforming, historic, two-story barn located on the rear and side property lines at the southwest corner of the parcel. The barn is a non-conforming structure due to its location within the required setbacks. The applicant is proposing to convert this barn into a single-story accessory dwelling unit, or ADU, and add a new single-car garage in front of the barn. In the original application, the proposed ADU had a stairway to the existing loft area on the second story. Oh, sorry, it's one more. But ADUs in the current code are limited to one story. Also, the maximum floor area allowed for an ADU on an 8,000-square-foot lot is 640 square feet, and the existing first-floor area alone is 580 square feet. So, with the loft and stairway added to that floor area, it exceeded the 640 square feet and they were removed. The new 236-square-foot detached one-car garage is located in front of the historic barn and is connected to it by a covered breezeway. I'm going to go into the elevations, but make some comments as we go here. Staff received a question from a planning commissioner regarding whether windows and doors are allowed on the property line and whether or not they needed to be fire-rated. It's a good question, thinking about if there was something right up against the back of this. So, I inquired to our building official, Fred Cullum, and he submitted a memo stating that due to the non-buildable easement that runs along the rear and side lot lines of the property, there is no issue with doors and windows being located right on that existing lot line. Also, the 10-foot no-build easement satisfies the California Building Code and California Fire Code setback requirements for unprotected openings. The north side elevation and the south side elevation. And then, most of the architectural historians' recommendations were incorporated into the final design, with the exception of the omission of the round gable-end window shown on the proposed front elevation, which I have a feeling is going to be shown to you since it's sitting at the back now. Standard 3 of the Secretary of the Interior Standards for Rehabilitation states that "changes that create a false sense of historic development, such as adding conjectural features or architectural elements from other historic properties, will not be undertaken." So, based on this standard and the archive and architectural recommendations, staff cannot support the introduction of the round window to the gable end. However, following the Architectural and Site Review Committee meeting, the applicant submitted a preservation plan that proposes two options be given to the applicant. One, disassemble the historic barn, catalog and save existing exterior materials, install a foundation and framing, and then reassemble the exterior materials. Or, two, rebuild the structure from the inside, keeping the exterior of the structure intact. The applicant also proposed that three conditions be attached to the design permit. One, that the existing siding to be removed as needed and carefully stored to be reused after the building has been, and waterproofed, with priority given to area visible from the street. Two, new siding where needed shall be to the same dimensions and surface texture as the existing siding and used only where existing siding is insufficient to cover. And three, that existing trim and details will be maintained and reused as noted in submitted plans as much as possible. The planning commission has the discretion in issuing the design permit to require the recommended historic preservation of stabilizing the structure in place or may allow the applicant to disassemble and reassemble the building as proposed in option one. Staff recommends that you review the application and approve project 170403 with the omission of the round window and the gable end and direction on the preferred historic preservation
Other questions by commissioners? Yes, Ed.
So, I was, I need some clarification on the loft because the plans still show loft. And when we visit the site, we don't have access to the interior, so I'm not quite sure what's going on with that loft. If it's not approved, is it still there and you could use a regular, you know, where was the stairway that was removed and what is the access to the loft without the stairway now?
Okay, so, Commissioner Smith actually let me know earlier about a few things on the plans that, this went through a lot of different iterations, so there are a few remaining labels on there that need to be removed. There is an existing loft with an existing stairway that will be removed, and then the one that you actually saw on the plans remaining was one that was proposed, so that was, was never there and will never be there. The final design is just going to have it open through the middle section up to the very top to allow natural light to filter down in through it.
But you could just put a ladder, a non-permanent ladder for access to loft?
Well, the floors to be removed as well.
The loft's going to be removed.
There's no loft.
It's going to be removed.
So, there, in the conditions, it's required that the loft be removed and so that whole structure, the loft, including the stairs. And when the building plans come in, they cannot have any reference to loft. It'll be, it has to be...
My second question is, thank you for answering that one. What is a conjectural element or what?
I think you're going to see one.
I'm not familiar with that term.
I think it's just something that's added to create a false sense of his historic time period.
That's how that term is used in architecture?
Well, if I may, I had a follow-up question to that because the plans show that there are actually numerous new windows being added to this historical structure. With that being the case, how does the round new window become a conjectural, you know, element or feature? And the, all the other windows do not create that false, you know, historical feature or expectation.
I think in general with the Secretary of the Interior Standards, you're supposed to differentiate new from old, and the issue with the round window was that it's an antique round window that one might assume was from the time period of the barn, and it's at the very front and featured prominently on the front of the building, so.
So, the distinction is the antique look of the round window, whereas the rectangular windows are more, are modern look to them.
Yeah, as well as the location. So, the primary facade, you really try not to modify too much. The correct place to introduce a new window would be on the side elevation or on the back for historic.
The existing structure, doesn't it have a design element at that same peak?
There's a hanging compass rose or something to that.
You know, and there's also ghost lines from the inside of the structure that you can see that there used to be a barn door that would open at the top.
So, that feature that's up there, is that, is that just attached onto the exterior or built into the structure?
Yeah, it's just a hanging compass.
It's just a hanging, oh, okay. All right, thank you. Yeah, Susan, I don't know if you had questions?
Just one point of clarification, the garage door moves, but the, she doesn't have an issue with that because it's a newer door. What about the siding that changes because that garage door moves? Didn't come up at all? Okay.
Any other commissioned questions on this, to the staff report? Hearing none, I'll open it up to the public. So, yeah, come on up, Dennis, with your conjectural feature.
There's been a lot of discussion about this one. I'm Dennis Norton, I represent Lizzie and Michael Adams. They own that beautiful white house there on the corner. That was originally, originally that whole area of the avenues was part of this farm, and that was probably the farm building that was it. And so, take yourself backwards in this thing, that structure there had a dirt floor. It had a vertical redwood 1x12 siding with air gaps in between it, and it obviously had some type of roof in the time. I don't know, probably wood shingles at the time, but it was, it was built, single-wall construction as most barns were done there, and the shape that you see there now was, we think, the original shape of the building. Okay, what's happened over the years is everything that you see on the outside now is not part of the original structure. All that's... All that siding, the beadboard that you see there, that was all added in later years. So somewhere between 1915 and 19, I don't know, probably in the '30s, they, they recided the barn. And it was still, at that time, it had a dirt floor. They came inside and pictured this siding going, there was, there was just basically a mudsill. They went, the siding went down, attached at the bottom, they're sitting right in the dirt. And they came in and they poured a three- or four-inch concrete slab inside of it, two or three times, to make it work, because it's converted from horses to, to automobiles. Okay? So it did operate as a garage. The main house there was built in 1922. And, and, and so the barn has really stayed intact as just a shop, but it's still single-wall construction. It's still on a slab with no foundation. And the difficulty we're having with this process, and, and certainly the owners want to rebuild this thing exactly like it is, or we're proposing, that is their intent to do that. The process, we're a little bit of disagreement between myself and the engineer and the owners. What is the best process to do this barn in? The engineer and myself feel that, that the only way to rebuild this thing and get a foundation and get, and get a structure that's going to last more than 20 years is to disassemble it and put it back together. They would prefer not to do that. And if there is a way to do that, we will, that's the pathway we'll take. But we're asking for tonight, is we're asking for an option to, to, first of all, we'll, we'll go through and we'll designate all the features of the barn itself, just like of any historic structure that, that you see come in front of you, particularly ones where you've taken down. Then, then what we'll do, we'll disassemble it and stockpile. The siding is really the thing that needs to be saved. The windows are going to be replaced, what, what needs to be replaced are now, or there's new windows. Those will all be replaced anyway. There'll be a new roof on it. But we need to have a structure that's actually framed. There is no framing inside. This is, you know, and what happens is you can look and see air gaps through the walls. So the way, if you were to rebuild the same, it'd be extremely difficult to get, get a waterproof membrane on the outside of this building. And so the way that needs to be done is, is if we can disassemble and put it back together, we can produce exactly what you're seeing or what we're proposing there. As to the question, Linda, about the garage door there, we discussed that, and what we're going to do is we'll find that same beadboard or have it, have it manufactured to, to, to fill in that area with that garage door. Now, the other garage door you see on the front, the other garage door, we're saving that and putting that back on. That is architectural. It doesn't go anywhere. It's a door to nowhere. But, but we, can you see around the corner a little bit? Is that possible?
Yeah, you can't see it.
I don't think so.
Bye. That's as far as, you can't see it.
That's as far as you can. Well, there is a door to the right side of that garage door. So the garage door is coming out where you're seeing it, and that'll be filled in with, with a beadboard. And that's a walkway to get between the building and separate, the historian wants to separate the two buildings, so we did that. We pulled them away from each other, so the garage is not touching, touching the barn. So, so basically, the barn stays intact to what you see with the addition of a few windows. The whole upstairs there, there's no loft. You know, the reason we originally had a loft in there is that we thought that the whole thing would be an ADA unit. Well, we exceeded the square footage, so that part of the structure has to come out of it. So we're taking the loft out of it. You'll, you'll be sitting and standing in the, in the living part of it, and you'll look up through a story and a half up into that, into that upper area there. There, there's no ladder, there's no loft at all to, to go up to. So that's, that's a guess of it, as far as the round window. I would say that window there is probably 60, 70 years old itself. Yes, it's old, but there's nothing on the, on the existing barn that actually shows the historic character of the original barn anyway. And we're all going to add new windows. We think it's a nice architectural detail to put to the front of it, and we would, we would appreciate a consideration on that. We, we think it needs, that front gable needs some kind of thing. There is, if you go inside, like Katie had said, is there's, there's actually old barn doors that you opened up to throw the, because the loft was there, they would throw the hay up there. That's a guess. And they throw, throw it up on the top. Maybe they had a pulley to pull it up and down from the flatbed. So that's our proposal tonight. If you'd like, have any questions, either owners are here, they'd be happy to answer it. And their, their intentions are, and you see the, what a wonderful job they've done with that, with the front houses. They, they, they want this to look nice, and this is, if you went in the backyard, you'll see they have a little English, Old English tea garden in the back there. It's really, really nicely done. So they take very good care of their property, and they want a good project here. We appreciate your consideration. Thank you.
All right, thank you, Dennis. Questions? Yes, Ed?
So can you explain the choice of the window? I mean, why did you pick that 60-year-old round window?
We had it, one, one thing. And number two, number two is, is that, that we felt, as you see with the circle that's up there now, you can probably see it through a little bit.
Yeah.
It has, it feels real nice with the definition up there, and we thought to scale that, yes, it may be, it may be even the same time that the siding was put on the outside. I don't even know. But it's, this is an older window. We felt that it fit, fit well there. It's a single glazing still, but it, it has an architectural appeal, I think, that works real, really well. And, and, and we certainly respect Leslie's opinion in this thing, but I think in this case, I think it's something that could really add some nice feature to the barn face. Thank you.
All right, thank you, Dennis. Any other members of the public wish to address the commission on this item? Seeing none, I'm going to close the microphone and bring it back to the commission for further discussion and action. Somebody would like to start us off?
Linda wants to start, since she's...
She's ready to go.
You're ready?
You know, kinda. So just to clarify, I did speak with Matt before about some of the items that were on the plans, and I don't know if you've written those up as, as conditions. So when we approve it tonight, we're approving the plans without the notations that are still there in error, right?
I spoke with Katie, and, and, yeah, those are going to be removed. And we're, we're going to get to see the building permit as well, and we can verify that those will not be on that, so...
Okay. But in tonight's conditions, I just want to make sure that it's clear that we're approving plans with those changes. And, and those are, wherever it says "with loft above," new detached living with loft above, strike out the "with loft above." Condition one also needs correction. It says the staircase and lodge will be removed. It should be loft. Sort of caught me, we're going to have a lodge in there. And there's a typo with 540 square feet. Should be 640 square feet.
Yeah, I'm tabbed on my hair, so...
Yeah, good job. I also confirm that there are no changes going on inside the house, inside the main house. And the questions that I had about the windows in the site, I think Dennis answered pretty clearly that, that the loft is gone, so those aren't going to be a concern. One question I did forget to ask is, how are they going to open? I noticed that there are awning windows in that upper area that you're not going to be able to get to. Are they automatic?
It could be automatic, but in those kind of awning windows we have, usually have a crank bolt, and it has the turner at the bottom. So either that or automatic. One of the two.
So it reaches the...
Yeah, because you would want ventilation up there, because it's trapping in, in the upper part.
Was your thought in adding, you added two windows and two skylights on the same side, and then the round window in the fur... was your thought letting the light in or letting the hot air out?
For the, for the, the upper, the upper awning windows, yeah, was also to release, to release hot air as it rises. But also ventilation, summertime, you put those open and you get airflow through there. This one won't operate. This will just be a fixed window.
Okay.
And, but it will, it will, in the morning hours, cascade that, that light shaft through, into the, into the unit.
So I personally have a lot of respect for Leslie and a lot of respect for the preservation rules that California has come to. One that I've never really understood is the one that says you have to have a comma, if you will, so that the building continues to tell the story of history accurately and doesn't have any elements that look like they could be old. And you can go ahead and sit down, Dennis, if you want to. Thank you very much. It wants to tell the, the story accurately, so there's not an element that looks old that could modify your understanding of how much of that building is old. In this particular case, you can't see it unless you're in the backyard, because of the, where the tree is. And the change in the door below, moving the garage door over and adding the features that are going to get added, I don't see where it messes up the story. So I don't really have a problem with the round window. As we've discussed before, I completely understand it being almost impossible to try and weatherproof a building that you have to build from the inside out. So I don't have any problem with taking it down and putting it back together. I think that should be well documented, and the engineer and the architect and the owners have to figure out how to make that work. But I think from, from my perspective, it's not a problem doing it either way. I had a couple of condition questions. And I apologize for taking just a minute here. On condition 21C, I wanted to just mention that the administrative review or the design permit, whichever applies, for the secondary dwelling unit shall be in effect only so long as the owner of record occupies either the main residence or the secondary dwelling unit. So this, they have to live there in order for this to be a dwelling unit. And I'd like to add a condition to item 21, that it be included in what's recorded with the county, that it cannot be a rental for less than 30 days. Can't be a vacation rental. And on condition number 22, where they're talking about the preservation, restoration of the existing, item B says, "The applicant and/or contractor shall field verify all existing conditions on historic buildings and match replacement elements and materials according to the approved plans. Any discrepancies found between the approved plans and those features must be reported to the Community Development Department." I also talked to Katie and Matt about that before the meeting, and our building inspector also needs to be involved in that and inspecting it, you know, step by step, so it's not just the applicant and the contractor making sure that they're following that. And I don't know if you need to add that to the condition, but it's understood that our building inspector will be inspecting that. And the concern about it turning into a loft in the future, I think, is well taken care of by the, the unit is restricted to the approved size, and I think you should just add the language, "And no loft is permitted." And with those comments, I could support this project?
Well, I think Linda did a fabulous job for us, and I'm in agreement with everything.
It, it won't surprise you that I'm not totally in agreement. I am in agreement about the Secretary of Interior Standards. I'm not a fan of it. I, I don't think we should have these quote hyphens. But I want to go back even a little bit further, and maybe I'm just way off base, which is not necessarily uncommon, but it all comes back to this historic structures list to begin with. So this one is our Capitola Architectural Survey, which in fact, that's what it was. It was a survey. It was a ser... and I was, I got to tell you, I've told some false stories out there, so I'm going to make the record clear right here. Actually, there was some architectural historians involved with this. I read the list of names of the people who assisted with it, which have some historical, they've worked with museums and stuff, but actually the Rowan Associates are architectural historians. So I have to go back on that and correct that statement that I've falsely been spreading, that it was just a group of individuals. So, but now that I've done that, it, it was in fact, a survey. In fact, the purpose says, "The object of the survey was to conduct an inventory of Capitola's arch..." and I'm sorry, I don't mean to preach down to you, but I want you to know how I get to my decisions. "To conduct the inventory of Capitola's architectural resources for community planning. Use cultural appreciation to determine the feasibility of establishing a historic district." In fact, there was three historic districts established off of this. It was the Venetian Courts, the Six Sisters Longway District, and the Old Riverview Historic District. So what we have is, we have three districts that came from that, and then some cultural appreciation of architectural design, if you will. Like this is what it... and they do have the wrong address on here for 1725 38th, it says 38th, which is actually 48th Avenue. But when you look at what their context was, what they looked, looked at was, "A bungalow craftsman influences, symmetrical with multi-pane windows, facade, narrow horizontal siding." No mention of the barn. The barn was obviously there, but that's not what this is even, in the whole context. It was never even mentioned as part of the historical. So I would question whether it's even part of this, our historical context, if that's, if that's what you want to call it. I think it's great that we, we keep our historical structures around, and I think it's great that they're going to stay true to what the looks of that, that barn is. But I would question if it even needs to be on the, if it's, it's not even mentioned in the historical context statement that was made of a survey. So for me, I think what the design is awesome. I think the round window is fine there. I don't know that we have to look at, I don't even think, for me, I wouldn't even worry about cataloging it. I'd say, make it look the same, and, and I think it would look the same for anybody driving by it as a historical architecture design of, of that time. So I'm fine with the window. So I guess we do agree. I, we're fine, I'm fine with the window, but I, I just have a problem with these historical context things that I think are blown out of proportion, and the barn's not even mentioned in the statement, if you will. So I like the design, and I like the window. So I'll leave it at that.
All right, thank you, TJ. Ed?
So I think this is an excellent use. The concept is really a good one, to take this barn and make it into an ADU and provide additional housing in a kind of really attractive, desirable place. And I think Commissioner Smith really did cover the, the issues really well. I'll just add that I, I'm still, have trouble getting my hands around the Secretary of Interior's rules as applied to our city here. I'm wondering what the origin of those rules is and what they were thinking, what kind of area, what kind of history they were thinking about when they... this is only one example of how we have difficulty applying them. Here we have a obviously old building that has gone through numerous changes in its life, and now we're going to do something else to it. It's a living history. So 40 years from now, this will be part of that history. It'll be that, the, the current owners put in a 60-year-old round window, part of the history, so I'm okay with it.
Okay. Susan?
No, I'm fine.
Fine?
That I agreed with Linda. She did a really nice job.
Okay. Well, I guess I'll wrap it up and want to appreciate the applicant for bringing this project. And, and, and I think we are in agreement of, and the applicant is in agreement, to trying to preserve certain elements of this structure that's historic for Capitola. And I think that we can all share in the appreciation of preserving some of that history of Capitola. I think the applicant has done a very good job with that. At the same time, we're moving forward to provide additional housing that is critically needed in our community, so I'm appreciative of that as well. Concerning the standards, I certainly can appreciate in certain places where they may apply, and this concept of conjectural features. You know, if you had a truly standalone historical structure and wanted to preserve it, you would want to be very fastidious about having elements that are consistent with the time period. But, you know, here, we have something that's set in the back of private property. It's not that visible. There have been many changes already. I don't think that anyone is going to be confused about, "Oh, they must have built this, you know, in the 19th century or the 18th century." I, I don't think that's going to happen. So I think this is a fine balance between allowing the property owners to develop it as they see fit and appropriate design, but at the same time, retaining the overall historical outline and structure of the building. So with that, I'm fine with the window as well, and I'm also fine with the, leaving the alternatives on how the siding or the exterior will be preserved. With that, I believe we have, you want to make your comments into a motion?
Yeah, I would move approval with the corrections to the plans as stated and documented, and the addition, additional language about the non-vacation rental use and the no loft is permitted.
And including the building inspector?
Yes.
And, right, okay. So we have all those conditions of the motion. So we have all those conditions of the motion. Is there a second?
All second.
Okay. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? The motion passes unanimously, so congratulations. Yeah.
Can I take my prop home, or can I leave here?
I think it's gotta go on the wall.
Probably got winded, just went up.
Drop it on the way out.
Thank you for keeping the historic nature of the barn.
The next item on our agenda is 4201 Capitola Road. This is a proposal for three new single-family homes, demolishing the existing structure and the detached garage, an tentative parcel map for three lot subdivision. And there is a variance request for encroachment into the side yard setbacks. So may we begin with the staff report, please?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Two parcels at 4201 Capitola Road are adjacent to two commercial structures, to the east and west, Capitola Road to the south, and a single-family home in the R1 Single Family Residential Zoning District to the north. Applicant is proposing to subdivide two lots of record totaling 9,684 square feet into three new lots, and build one new single-family home on each of the newly created lots. Parcel A, I'm gonna add this because Commissioner Smith pointed out that I had not given you the size of the three houses, just the lots. So Parcel A will be 3,355 square feet with a 1,997 square foot house. Parcel B will be 3,024 square feet with a 1,996 square foot house. And Parcel C will be 3,027 square feet with a 1,993 square foot house. The three new lots will face 42nd Avenue, and Parcel A will also border Capitola Road. The subdivision complies with all of the subdivision design standards in Chapter 16.24 of the Capitola Municipal Code. House 1 features horizontal siding, open rafters and the eaves, timber detailing for porch work, clinker brick bases at the bases of the porch columns, and clad wood windows. House 2 features cement plaster walls with a heavy dash texture, open rafter in the eaves, and clad wood windows with 2x6 rough sawn wood head, jam, and silt trim. And House 3 features cement board shingle siding, open rafters in the eaves, and clad wood windows with 2x6 rough sawn wood head, jam, and silt trim. The applicant is requesting a variance to the design standards for the CN Neighborhood Commercial Zoning District that would allow the three proposed houses to have roof eaves that extend into the required side yard setbacks. The Capitola Municipal Code states that the planning commission may grant a variance permit when it finds, one, that because of special circumstances applicable to the subject property, including size, shape, topography, location, or surroundings, the strict application of this title is found to deprive subject property of privileges enjoyed by other properties in the vicinity and under identical zone classification; and two, that the grant of a variance permit would not constitute the grant of a special privilege inconsistent with the limitations upon other properties in the vicinity and zone in which the subject property is located. As a policy, staff generally does not support variances to development standards for a subdivision product, project where the applicant has the ability to design lots necessary to accommodate reasonably sized and well-designed homes. The properties are regularly shaped, flat, and of comparable size or larger prior to the subdivision to neighboring properties, and there are no unusual physical, topographic, or geometric conditions that exist. When the plans were originally submitted, staff informed the applicant that no encroachments, including eaves, were allowed in the side setbacks for structures in the CN zone. Instead of changing the design of the structures, the applicant created a composite street view of the structures with the eaves cut off and requested a variance. The variance requested, the variance request stated that if the variance is not granted, the eaves will be eliminated as shown on Sheet 5 of the application drawings illustrated on the slide in the blue circles. Staff recommends that the planning commission deny the variance request based on the following findings. One, the three regularly shaped lots do not qualify for any special circumstances; and two, that the granting of a variance would constitute a special privilege that other properties in the vicinity and zone in which the property is situated, in this case, the CN zone, do not enjoy. In response to the denial without prejudice recommendation in the staff report, the applicant submitted an alternative set of plans illustrating how the three houses could be designed to comply with the design standards if the planning commission chooses to deny the variance request. Those designs were received, reviewed, and sent out as additional materials today. The changes on House 1 and House 3 are minimal, with the roof line simply shifting over to meet the required setback requirements. The roof on House 2 was redesigned with a gable at the front left side and one on each of the north and south elevations. The floor plans remain the same. In the alternative sets of plans, all three houses comply with the design standards for the CN Neighborhood Commercial Zone. So given that, staff recommends the planning commission deny the variance and approve the alternative plans submitted on April 5, 2018, as conditioned in Attachment 6, which I included as, in case you were to approve this, we went ahead and put the conditions in there. That's Attachment 6. And that's it.
All right. Thank you, Matt. Questions from commissioners for the staff report? Seeing no questions, I'll open it up to the public. Does the applicant wish to make a comment to the commission?
Good evening, Matthew Thompson with Thatcher &amp; Thompson Architects. And I guess the place to start with this is that, one way or another, we'd like to walk out this evening with an approved project. And want to be clear about that right from the beginning.
We've got that with any point.
But let me kind of give you a little backdrop of how we viewed this project right from the beginning. Because the property currently is two lots that front on Capitola Road, but under the same ownership with a derelict old house on it. We've worked on 42nd Avenue a couple of times over the last decade or so. Pearson Court was a project that came out of our office. And in the, over the last 10 years or so, we've seen 42nd Avenue start to kind of come into its own. And that's really not uncommon these days, as we realize that a lot of communities have overzoned for commercial space and with no real expectation that it'll all be built out for commercial uses, particularly office uses, which are not in high demand. And residential uses are an entirely appropriate response to this, because as we all know, housing is keenly needed, particularly family housing. And so this was an opportunity to, from our perspective, make 42nd Avenue just a healthier neighborhood going forward, investing in new buildings that in fact, fit into the residential character. When we got to the corner, there was this large redwood tree that one can't avoid. And we thought, okay, let's have some, a character for the house that seems to be appropriate for its location. And then we made the deliberate decision to have a porch along the front so that it appeared that there was a front door on Capitola Road. And that really was in part because I think that's also good for Capitola Road, where there are, I think, opportunities for it to be an interesting mix of residential and commercial uses. So that was the easy part, was kind of figuring out what ought to be happening here and what it ought to look like. And it was possible, really straight away, to figure out that, yes, you could meet all of the zoning ordinance requirements on three lots and do three nice houses here that had nice big backyards. And the right-of-way for 42nd Avenue is unusually wide, so we've got almost 30 feet from the front of the house to the curb. And then we came up against this commercial zoning requirement that the side yards not have overhangs. And my first response was, well, that's a dumb idea. And so we pursued this variance. And the odd part about it is that, of course, one of the findings for a variance always is that it's not a grant of special privilege. And in this case, there's certainly no privilege in spending more money to do overhangs on a house when you could save money and just cut them off and meet the zoning ordinance clearly. So we don't see any privilege involved here. And quite frankly, as we understand it with the currently approved general plan and rezoning, this particular rule would go by the wayside as well. So we thought, hey, let's ask. And that's why that was included in the project. In the end, we've had a good working relationship with the staff, and although it was a bit last minute, we did come up with an alternative design that meets the zoning ordinance and doesn't require the variance. And so if you find the variance without merit, then we would encourage you to approve the project in its alternative version with, without the overhangs. I think that these kinds of projects are important for any community. Thoughtful, well-designed infill residential development is really how we're gonna meet our housing demands. There aren't large acreages for new subdivisions. Most of our new housing is gonna come from, like your previous project and like this one, making a good use out of the land resources that a community has. And I think these will be three houses that will also provide new residents that will have a real stake in making sure that 42nd Avenue continues to be a stronger neighborhood all the time, and can't ask for more than that. So with that, I'm available for questions, and I will be ready to follow through on whichever decision you come to.
Thank you, Matthew. Matt, I have a question. It's, because in my mind, it seems that we're faced with, what's the value of an eve? Maybe you could just address that for, you know?
You know, it's very subjective, because it really is just, on a certain level, not much more than a matter of taste. But the kinds of eaves that we have shown in our preferred version are really just kind of vernacular residential details. There's no great high art involved. It's just, we've been building houses like this in the United States for a couple hundred years, and people recognize them as being home-like. And so it really is just as simple as that. There's no high art explanation. They do actually provide protection, and the rain as it's beating down means that that top edge of the house, which is the most vulnerable point for water intrusion, has the benefit of a, the same reason we have a bill on our ball cap. It keeps the sun and the weather out of our face, and like I said, there's no high art explanation. It's just kind of vernacular architecture that we know and recognize.
Thank you, Matt. Any other member of the public wish to address the commission on this item? Seeing none, I'm gonna close the microphone. I'll bring it back for discussion and action. Yes, Ed?
So since a lot of people wear their ball caps backwards now, I think that metaphor is gonna cost you a variance. I mean, we've had so many variance discussions that I can predict where that's gonna go here, and I think the applicant did too. I do have minor concern with the last-minute, in a public hearing, set of plans that change the project, but I think this is so minor, and there is no opposition anyway, that I'm gonna, you know, that's not gonna affect me. The only other thing that was of interest to me was the choice of residential for this site. When you look at the one across the street, which was mixed use, and the one on the other side, which is commercial, it just tells you where, you know, what's the evolution right now of use. Always used to be commercial as a higher and more desirable use than residential, but in this case, they had a choice of both, and they chose residential. So that's where it's headed. So I have no problem with the project as, without a variance.
Anyone else?
Well, I agree. I have no problem with the project without the variance. I think it's actually a nice use. I think it will provide more residential units. I did, just so we're aware of it, if they were operating under our new zoning ordinance, which they're not, they wouldn't have gotten the three lots, because our new zoning regulations require 3,200 square feet per lot. So, but I think this, I think this is a good project. I'm happy to support it.
I'm on board as well. Without the variance, I'm in agreement.
I'm gonna be a salmon swimming upstream. I think it's the wrong project for the location. I think that the purpose of the CN zone is to have a harmonious intermingling of pedestrian, commercial, and residential activities, and what we have are three residential units that would not be allowed in an R1 zone. So for me, it's not an eve issue. It's if you want to put three houses in that location, then they should be, they should meet the R1 requirements, if you're trying to extend the R1. And if not, it should be a project that is more harmonious with the zoning and what our vision for looking forward for Capitola Road would be. So I'm afraid I'm gonna be sitting on the, on the side. I don't see a way to walk out with an approved plan tonight from where I sit.
And just, I'll, to my opinion, is I was actually supportive of the variance. I think because it is a residential project in a potentially, you know, commercial zone, and I think that residential is a higher and more needed use in Capitola. And, you know, with the ADU laws, we've been forced to accept many exceptions and variances for the sake of housing. And to me, this was a small exception. And, you know, it's a minor issue about the eaves, but because of, you know, the design elements and the protection elements from the weather, I was willing to support the variance. And also because the way it's situated, you know, confronting 42nd Avenue, being the gateway to 42nd Avenue, and new potential development in 42nd Avenue, I think having the best-looking designs at that location would have been preferable. And also on either side, they're not, you know, close neighbors on either side of it. You know, on the Capitola roadside, I mean, that's, you know, there's the frontage road there. On the other side, there's a driveway with a separation from a garage. So I didn't feel that it was impinging upon the existing residents in that area. But that was just my thoughts about the variance, but it appears that I may be in the minority with that. But, so, is there a motion?
Can we just discuss that a little bit, just so?
Oh, sure, yes.
Because, I mean, what you're saying all makes sense, except that you haven't really addressed the conditions required for a variance. I mean, you're more like taking a big view and saying, in the big picture, this is what I, as philosopher king, would like to do with this site. But when we're dealing with a variance under state law, we have to make specific findings. And do you really think we can make those findings?
Well, I mean, I did, and I did think of it in those terms. I didn't really, I mean, hear kind of granularly, but if the, if it's, the question, is it a special circumstance? I saw the juxtaposition of the two zonings being, you know, abutting one another, and an effort to put in residential into a potentially commercial zone. And to me, that is a sufficient special circumstance to be able to consider that particular variance, because it's not a significant variance. I mean, I think we're talking about a matter of maybe 18 inches, a foot, and five inches there. And so that's how I was, you know, thinking about, okay, is this a special circumstance? I thought I could justify this being a special circumstance. And because of the zoning... And because of the zoning that's there, and because of our interest in maybe promoting residential construction there. And is it a special privilege? I mean, I, under any similar circumstances, I don't know. I think I would probably, you know, grant the same kinds of variances. And as I said, I think we've been forced to do that under the ADU statutes in many respects, and this is along those same lines, and to a much minor extent. So weighing the extent of the variance against what the community gains, against what could have been developed there legitimately, more commercial uses with even more traffic coming into the area. So that's how I address those two issues, Ed, and so just to, so if I convinced anyone to change their vote, then...
Okay, I'll move approval of the alternate plan without a variance.
I'll second it.
There's a motion and a second. Any further discussion? With that, I'll call for a vote. Maybe we'll do a roll call vote on this one, Jackie?
No.
Commissioner Newman?
Yes.
Commissioner Welch?
Yes.
Commissioner Westman?
Yes.
Chairperson Story?
Yes. Motion passes four to one. Next, we'll go to the Director's Report.
A very brief Director's Report for you, Mr. Chairman. Next week, April 12, the City Council will again consider a marijuana ordinance. We are going to seek direction on a framework for a future ordinance and how that should be set up, including whether or not we should go forward with a ballot initiative this November to assess a tax, should the council want to allow retail sales of marijuana in the city. So that may be an item that you or members of the public would like to attend. And with that, I'll wrap up and express my thanks to you all once again.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Reg. Any other commission communications? Seeing none, I'll adjourn this meeting. Thank you, everyone, and good night.
Good night, everybody. I'm out.